...meeting today, Tuesday, December 13th. Our call to, well, invocation will be Father John Jacobs and the Pledge of Allegiance be read by, I mean be led by Commissioner Bill Pickens. If you would stand, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, you have always told your people that if we desire your presence, that we should ask for it. And that is the purpose of this invocation, to ask for your presence within each and every person here. We pray, Lord, for the commissioners and staff, that they will have the wisdom, discernment, and understanding that they need to reach decisions which are good for our entire county, not just one place or one person, but for all of us, Lord. We pray for all your people here, that your spirit will be with them, so that their words may be heard. Help them to communicate to these your leaders that there are needs in this community. We pray, Lord, for civility to prevail above all, not that we can always agree, but that we can always come to a consensus that what is best for the most. Lord, in all of this, we ask your blessing, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let us join together in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can take your seats. Commissioner Lible, if you'll meet me up here. We have a little presentation, board members, if you'll come up and join us.
We're gonna do it right here. Oh. I thought we were tipping hats.
This is to Chip Lible, in recognition for service as chairman of Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, November 2015, November 2016.
Thank you, Chairman Harvey.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Smile.
Stay right there, Von Kip. Let's do our, alright, gentlemen?
To our constituents, let's do the Happy New Year.
Might want to give a brief history of what we're doing.
I will. We do float, we do Christmas parades all over the county.
What's about it?
For the month of December. In every municipality, and we hadn't ridden together in a long time, but we five decided this year we wanted to show unity. And we built a really nice float, and we got these hats, because I wanted the look of the old mayor. And Larry thought it'd be a good gesture to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year by tipping our hat to constituents. So I'll let you have the honor.
Alright, on the count of three. One, two, three. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Do you want to wear that? Thank you. Why don't we wear them for the whole meeting?
Okay.
Most of them wish I did.
Alright, gentlemen, next on our agenda is approval of the minutes for 2000, November 22nd, 2016. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
No, I need a motion.
Oh, motion. I have a motion.
How about I second?
Okay. Commissioner Goddard made the motion, Commissioner Lible second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Mr. Leary, employee recognition.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the time that the county recognizes its Employee of the Year for 2016. That employee is selected from among the four quarterly employees of the quarter for the previous year. We would like to ask those employees who have been recognized as an employee of the quarter in the previous year to come, to come forward and be recognized one more time, if they are in attendance, and they are Mr. William Osteen, who is with the Building and Grounds Division of General Services, Mr. Bob Hatton, who is with Mosquito Control Division of Sanitation. Doesn't appear that Mr. Hatton is in attendance, Ms. Marjorie Jacopick with Human Resources, and Mr. James Kilamade with Veteran Services. So, let's please give these employees a round of applause. These individuals were selected as employees of the quarter by a committee of their peers. That same committee has been tasked with the responsibility of choosing from among these four individuals an employee to be named as the Employee of the Year, and it's my great pleasure to announce that they have chosen Ms. Marjorie Jacopick.
Yes. Come up here, board members, if you'll stand up. We'll gather around. Let's get up here. Marjorie, smile.
Had a rough year with that insurance bill, didn't you? You deserve this.
Are we all? Good view. Thank you. Congratulations. Alright, Marjorie. Alright, commissioners in audience, the next thing on our agenda is our, oh, first I'd like to recognize some of our guests in the audience. Sheriff Alec Gator Deloche is in the audience. Sheriff, thank you for being here today. Tim Parker, our property appraiser, is in the audience, Tim? Alright, good. Our supervisor of elections, Mr. Charles Overter, in the back. Charles, thank you for being here today.
Joe Stevenson, Regional Transportation Commissioner.
Yes, Joe Stevenson, Regional Transportation Authority. He used to be with DOT, and Highway 20 and 17 were his projects back when we were together in 99. So, long time, Joe. Thank you for being with us today. Alright, is there anybody I missed? Any elected official? No? Good. Alright, we'll take, we're gonna start with our public comments. If you did not fill out a blue card, it's not too late. You don't need a blue card to speak. If there's a topic that you'd like to speak on, let us know. We can pull that item, and we can have that discussion at that time. So, our first speaker today will be Faith Sparkman, who wants to talk to us today. And I think, Mr. Spell, are you coming with her? Okay. No? Yes? Not that one? Okay. Alright, Mr. Spell, sit back down.
That one's later. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
At your very first meeting...
Pull that microphone closer to you.
At your very first meeting, when you were handed the FPNL paperwork, you really didn't have time to research it. So, we have, because I would hand it all the questions that I asked you. When we asked them if they were gonna raise our fees on our FPNL bill, they said no. But guess what? The very next morning at 5:00 on Channel 4, they're raising our fees $7 a month, with the right to raise them four more times next year. They had to have gone to the Florida Public Service Commission a year in advance to get these fees raised, so some of you sitting up there knew what was going on with FPNL. Had any of you done some research with the surrounding counties, or any of the other states that have these solar panels, you would've found out that the heat that these generate, you cannot grow any hay or have cattle nearby them, because there's a lot of radiation come off of them. So, from here on out, I hope that they all give you new ones' time to do your research. You can contact all the counties, you can contact other states, and you can even have your Chamber of Commerce do this research for you, but please, keep in mind the citizens, because everybody in FPL is gonna suffer from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman. This is the only blue card I have. Is there anybody else that would like to speak before us today? Mr. Robert Blot, please come forward. You have a blue card. Good. Could you give that to Tony?
Good morning, Robert Blot, 116 Sand Lake Drive, Pomona Park, Florida. I wanted to welcome all the new commissioners and say congratulations. It was, for some, it was a long battle, and others, maybe not so much, but congratulations on your elections, and I'm really looking forward to seeing some things happen. In the past, we've had a lot of problems with the commissioners not really wanting to hear what the people out here were saying. Now, I realize you have constituents at, maybe at your place of business, or your church, or wherever else you happen to be where you talk to people, but the people that come in here are people who are really concerned about their government and the way that the government's being run. And I would appreciate it personally, if you would take the time to listen to everything that everyone says, and give them the time without interruption. A lot of times, when I would come up here to talk, I would be interrupted, and out of three minutes, I might speak for 30 seconds. I really, no one likes to see that. You have an opportunity to speak at any time, and we don't. So, we appreciate the ability to come up here, take the time to come here, voice our concerns, and be heard. And I'm looking forward to being able to do that in an atmosphere that seems to be less volatile. And, you know, I'm looking for things to improve. One thing I want to ask, and I implore you to look into this and consider it. In the past, we had the Better Place Plan. We do have the Better Place Plan now, but it's different. We reworded it, and we got it passed with the new wording. When we had the old wording, that was never adhered to. In fact, the instructions were not given to the Better Place Plan Committee. I would like to see those instructions go to the Better Place Plan Committee, even if we can't change the wording, at least keep with the spirit of the Better Place Plan, and allow for people on that committee to advise as far as what money is spent. Right now, we're using that money for a lot of different things, and I don't believe that's what the Better Place Plan was meant to do. I understand that we are financially constrained right now, and we have to use the Better Place money, because we don't have a lot of income. But at the same time, the people of the county who pay for this, who wanted this Better Place Plan, would really appreciate it if they had a say in how that money was spent. So, I implore you to look into that, and also welcome everyone, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blot. Thank you very much. Okay, our next card will be Roxanne Weeks. That was quick. Good morning, Ms. Weeks.
Good morning. Actually, I'm gonna speak about item 13 on there. But I just want to welcome anyone anyway. I wasn't able to be here on the November 22nd meeting, your first meeting.
You want to wait till the 13th, item 13A? Is that the one you want to talk about?
Yes, the land donation.
Would you like to wait to that moment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on that issue.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just want to welcome everybody and the new guys, and hope everything goes well in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. We appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Janet Smith, come on up, please. Come on. You gotta come up to the microphone. We want everybody on tape, and we want to see your smiling face on camera.
On disc, you're dating yourself.
Yeah, that's true.
I hesitated, because I didn't know if you wanted to address item seven yet, or not.
No, we'll do that when we get to item seven, if that's okay.
Okay, that's what my comment is concerning, so should I wait for that?
Please do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would just like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda? Alright, seen none commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. I almost got out of line here. That ends our public comment. Number five, Mr. Joe Stevenson, Northeast Florida Regional Transportation Commission, multi-modal transportation plan. Mr. Stevenson, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioners, I appreciate you placing me on the agenda, giving me an opportunity to give you an overview of the Northeast Florida Regional Transportation Commission. I'm not quite sure how I get this to, get this presentation up on your screen.
We have a computer guy in the back that...
Okay, so he's gonna take care of that for me. Great. Alright, I feel much better now.
He gave you the thumbs up, sir.
My purpose in being here today is that we have completed a draft multimodal transportation plan, regional multimodal transportation plan. This agency, the Northeast Florida Regional Transportation Commission, was created by the Florida Legislature in 2013, and charged with responsibility for planning and implementing transportation on a six-county regional basis. This, this process is pretty closely, let's see somehow, I messed something up here. There we go. This process is governed by Chapter 343, Part 1, Florida statutes. And that statute gives us some pretty specific direction, and I'll refer to that as I go through here today. The first thing that that statute does is to give us a purpose, and that's so important, that's our focus, that I want to read that to you, and I promise not to read you the rest of the slides. So, we're here to improve mobility and expand multimodal transportation options for persons and freight throughout the six-county North Florida region. That is our purpose. It is in statute. But it is not by any means the first regional transportation effort that impacted this region or Putnam County. Up at the top of this little graphic, you see a First Coast Transportation Study Committee dated 1987. That study committee is the reason that Putnam County is now a part of DOT's District 2, instead of District 5. And I would submit that a lot of your transportation improvements are a result of that particular change. Of course, that's easy for me to say, because that's also the, the plan that brought me to be the Regional Planning Administrator for the Florida DOT in 1987. My office was in St. Augustine, and I covered two counties for the DOT, St. John's and Putnam, the two that moved from District 5 to District 2. And if you just kind of fast-forward, in 2010 through 2012, there was a Northeast Florida Regional Study Commission that I served on while I worked for St. John's County. I represented St. John's County on that committee. My friend, former county commissioner, Eubanks, served with me from Putnam County. He and I used to sit in the back and cabits. So, we've been doing this for a long time, and the Study Commission recommended creation of the Regional Transportation Commission, that I now have the pleasure of managing as executive director. We are not the first region in Florida to decide that perhaps transportation could be planned, implemented, and operated better if we had a regional perspective, instead of entirely a county-by-county perspective. The first of those was Orlando, when it had its explosive growth in the 70s and 80s, and all, and many of the regional, the urbanized areas of the county, state have followed that pattern. We would be the fifth regional transportation authority, or regional transportation entity, when we get to the final implementation stage. So, this is also the direction that the federal legislation pushes transportation and transportation planning to be done more on a regional basis, and even a super-regional basis that connects many regions together. We have a Board of Directors that is representative of our region. One of the problems that regional activities have is that the, that we have a one-man, one-vote kind of approach to regional activities. And if we do that in this region, Duval County has 62% of the votes, so whatever the Duval County representatives choose to vote for is what happens. And in fact, our board is organized so that that can't happen. Only four of the nine voting members are Duval County appointees, two from the mayor's office, two from the city council. The other five are appointed by county commissioners from the neighboring counties. So, we have a much more balanced approach to regionalization than might other agencies that do things strictly on a one-person, one-vote basis. The statute also gave us a number of tasks that we've been working on since our first meeting in October of 2013. The first is to develop a multimodal and prioritized plan for the region. We've got a draft of that plan, and that's what we're here to presenting today. It also said that there has to be an implementation plan and a funding, and identification of some funding sources for the initial activities that we propose. That's incorporated in the same plan. So, we have two tasks, one plan. We are also charged with conducting a public hearing in each of the six counties. We have finished with three of those, and we have three of them to come. Before we held a public hearing in any county, we offered an opportunity for the county commission to hear this overview and familiarize itself with what we were going to be talking to your constituents about. In Putnam County, we've scheduled that for the evening of January the 10th, so we'll be back in this room with a very similar presentation to this, geared toward the public and toward soliciting the public comments that we know are out there. Following that, we will modify the plan based on the public input, and then we will be back to you next year, probably in the first quarter, maybe a little into the second quarter, asking you to adopt our plan by resolution, so that we're all on board with this regional plan going forward. So, let's talk about the draft plan a little bit. First question about the draft plan is, why is it a draft? Because we don't have public input yet, because we haven't stood before county commissions and offered you a chance to talk to us about that plan. The plan meets all of the criteria in the, in the statute, and it includes all of the counties, all six counties. It's multimodal, it includes all of our modes. It provides transfer transportation for jobs, for commerce, for freight, for people, for health, for recreation, for education. And it has all of the, the plans and process and timeline and costs and so forth. This is a map that you probably can't see very well on the screen, but when you look at the plan, you'll see that it has projects in every county and in every mode reflected graphically. The, the way we are going to approach implementing this plan includes roles established by the federal act that was adopted in 2015, the FAST Act, which stands for Fixing America's Surface Transportation. And it identified three key roles that agencies such as ours will play, and we expect to play all of those roles, varying from project to project. In some, we'll be the doers. We'll be the leaders. In some, we will be participating while someone else leads. And in some, we will simply be speaking up on behalf of projects in order to help them move forward, however that's possible. And as they evolve, we may become partners or leaders on such projects. We have those in all categories going forward. So, let me go through the, the first six projects on our list of about 50 projects. It concludes examples of all of those roles, and this is not keyed to Putnam County, this is the whole plan. So, the first priority is coordinated regional transit service. Now, by that, we do not mean that there's going to be one transit operator that serves the whole region. What we envision is locally operated, regionally coordinated transit. I have the questionable pleasure of driving to Jacksonville from St. Augustine most days now during rush hour traffic, and I find it to be the most stressful thing that I've done in my young life. So, I would love to be able to get on a bus and ride to Jacksonville, instead of having to drive up there three to five days a week. We need to have that kind of service, and I think that that is part of the future of transportation. We will not all be driving single occupancy vehicles forever. The First Coast Expressway is a roadway that'll be a toll road. It's in Duval, Clay, and St. John's Counties, but it has a profound effect on Putnam County, because it replaces the Shands Bridge with a high-rise bridge, so that all of the marine traffic that could visit and utilize your port and riverfront facilities will now be able to get through on a regular, reliable basis. The St. John's Mayport Ferry is also not in Putnam County, but it represents a unique feature and a connection between Duval and St. John's and Nassau Counties that's different from anything else in the state, really. The future corridor study from Jacksonville to Tampa is not a proposal to build a single road. Some of you, like me, remember when in the late 80s, early 90s, we proposed a new road that went from Jacksonville to the Tampa area, and its corridor struck some environmentally sensitive lands. This is not that. This is the recognition that over a very broad section of our state, there's a need for a route, perhaps not a single road, but a connection of several roads, that facilitates easy movement on high volumes for freight, as well as, as individual travel, between the Jacksonville urbanized area and the Tampa urbanized area. Both have huge ports, both have other connections, they lack a smooth connection for freight and, and personal travel. There's a North Rail Freight Corridor that will ease access to both the port of Nassau and the Port of Fernandina, I think they call it, it's in Nassau County, and Jack's Port, which has lots of jobs. And finally, we include trails among our modes and among our projects. And I know that trails are particularly important in Putnam County because of your focus on ecotourism. We are, at this point, partnering by identifying available funds and working with the agencies that are implementing those projects, particularly the DOT. What we're about is connecting communities together. Transit is going to be our focus, but we are very concerned about other things, roads, trails, and other modes. So, let's talk about transit for a minute, if that's going to be our focus. First of all, I would point out to you that all six of our regional counties have successful operational transit services. In Putnam County, it's the Ride Solution. You should be very proud of the Ride Solution. I have known it and worked with it for over 20 years. They have done creative things to reach out to your citizens and provide services to your citizens that are admired by other transit agencies around the, the state and the region. What they don't have is really good communication and coordination with the, with the transit operators in adjoining counties. Now, all six of these transit agencies provide service into Jacksonville, because that's a central hub for jobs, medical services, and other things. But they also provide access from Jacksonville to Putnam County and, and other locations. If we could coordinate those things, so that Ride Solution continued to do its job in Putnam County, but had a better interface with the transit operators in other counties, more cooperation, more mutual support, we would have what amounts to a locally operated, regionally coordinated transit system that would increase the mobility of the people throughout our region, and that is our vision. There are many things that we can do to help that vision become a reality, and this is a list of them, and some of them are already underway. The Regional Transit Coordinating Committee has already begun to meet. Every county's transit operating staff is represented on that committee. In fact, Boyd Thompson is an old friend of mine, and he's on the committee, very, you can imagine, he's quite outspoken. And you've recently hired Liz Peak, who I also have under contract to help me manage that committee, so you've got one of our region's better transit advocates and operators right here in Putnam County. They're on that committee. We'll soon, I believe, be asking if you have a planner from your planning department that would like to sit on that committee. That'll be a, a part of our RTC agenda tomorrow. We also need to create a regional brand and marketing plan. Now, what do we mean by that? Well, we've done a number of transit studies, and what we find is that most people see the Ride Solution bus going down the road, and they say, "I can't ride on that bus. I'm not handicapped. I'm not transportation disadvantaged. I'm not eligible to ride on that bus." Wrong. That's a public transit bus, and it says "public transit" on every bus, and yet, when we survey people, we find that they really don't realize that. They don't think of that as a transit or transportation option. We need a brand that focuses people throughout the region, that when you see this brand, that's a public transit vehicle that you should consider using for your mobility needs. We have a grant application in for that purpose. We also need to create a mutual assistance agreement, so that... We also need to create a mutual assistance agreement so that agencies can help each other and have a system for helping each other. Your law enforcement and fire departments almost certainly have such agreements in place. These small transit agencies often don't have enough spares sitting on the yard waiting for a bus to break down. So, we had one in the region recently that called me and said, "Joe, we've got three spares for our little fleet, and they're all on the road because we've got three vehicles in this shop for extended repair. What do we do if one more vehicle breaks down and we can't meet our obligation to run our routes?" We found a neighboring agency that would loan them a vehicle. Fortunately, they turned out not to need it, but that plan should be in place. And that's the kind of thing that we think regionally coordinated local transit can help do. Finally, we hope to see a transit hub constructed at US 17 and US 19. A transit hub is somewhere where you can park your car, get on the bus, leave your car safely. It's a place where bus transfers from one bus to another can take place. We hope to partner with local agencies to continue closing the gaps in the Northeast Florida Loop Trail System. We hope to advocate for widening US 17 for west of Dunn's Creek to Satsuma. We have a simple plan for implementing funding. Again, we'll be playing the three roles, leadership, partnering, and advocacy. We will continue to ask for an assessment from each of our six counties every year, and we are actively, in fact aggressively, pursuing every grant opportunity we can find to help us do the things that we've described. So, status and next steps. We are currently updating local bodies like yourselves. We'll be having our public hearings. We're three down. Another one tomorrow. Yours is scheduled for January 10th, and I don't have a schedule for Clay County yet. When we finish that, we'll modify the plan, and we'll be back to ask for your resolution. That is required by statute. And now, I'm ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Stevenson?
About it this time. What time will that meeting be? Is it registered border county, or it'll be an evening meeting?
I believe we'll be doing it from 5:30 to 7:00.
And you said it was on the 10th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. No other question? Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, for your presentation.
Thank you for your ongoing support.
We appreciate it.
It's a pleasure working with you at Putnam County again.
And 17 needs to go all the way to Crescent City in the county.
Yes, sir, but it's like everything else. We have to take it one bite at a time.
I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item, commissioners on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there any items, any commissioners wanting to poll and discuss?
Just a second.
To my right, Commissioner Lible?
Give me just a minute. Go to the next one.
Okay. Commissioner Goddard?
Nothing.
Nothing? To my left, Commissioner Stillwell?
From the consent? No, I had got answers already previously. I was on the emergency services. I found out that we got grants to pay for some of this, so I was happy there.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, just because I haven't talked to press about that, but P, Q, and R.
P, Q, and R?
On those purchases for public works.
Okay.
And I'm S, Larry. Back to me with Mr. Hammond's.
Okay, so, we're going to pull, and I am O, E, and F. So, we're going to pull items O, E, F, P, Q, R, and S.
Do that again.
O, E, F.
Yeah.
P, Q, R, S. And...
Again?
Okay. O?
I've got nothing.
E, F, P, Q, R, S. And we'll take them one at a time. Do I hear a motion to accept the rest of the consent?
So moved.
All right. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible. Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Pickens, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Item, let's start with O. Well, let's start with E because that'll be, we'll go in page order. Page 51 on your packet, that was something I wanted to bring up. Chief Romey, would you please come to the microphone, please? Chief Romey spent a lot of time here yesterday with us going over it, but this is more for the public to understand items E and F. Chief Romey, if you'll give us a brief what we talked about yesterday.
Item E is purchasing three new engines, and as we discussed yesterday, we try to get at least three a year to, we've got over 200 trucks in the fleet on the fire side. And to make sure that we have operational trucks, we look at a number of different things to, if you will, swap out trucks or exchange trucks. And the biggest thing is mileage, the maintenance requests, you know, is it serviceable? Is it more in the shop than at the station? And then, the age of the equipment. What we're replacing are early 90s, late 80s vehicles is what these three will be replacing. And obviously, their useful life is, you know, in the emergency arena has been exhausted.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Romey on that item? All right, Chief Romey, item F?
Item F is something new we're doing this year in trying to save money.
Will you bring that microphone closer? That's okay.
Something we're doing this year, it's new that we haven't done in probably 15 or 20 years, is rechassis or remount an ambulance, taking an existing ambulance that has reached its serviceable life, that has between 400 and 500,000 miles on it, and has experienced a lot of maintenance and, you know, those type costs. But there's a cost-benefit analysis that I use to try to determine which units will work. Some are past that. It's just going to cost too much to totally repair, replace those. But the two units that we have here actually are very good candidates, I think, for this process. And if this works, I'm planning on recommending this, you know, well into the future because, as you can see there, a new ambulance is right at $267,000. And if we can rechassis and get a new ambulance for 160, you know, we're saving over $100,000.
And we appreciate that savings, and that's good thinking outside the box. Commissioners, any comment?
Yeah, can I make a comment?
Sure, you can.
Because I learned this firsthand this weekend. This weekend, I had a loved one and family that had broke hip in daylight, and ambulance came and picked her up. And they said they were going to have to travel very, very slow because the road was bad and that the ambulance had 500,000 miles on it, the driver said. So, I got to witness, you know, see that firsthand Sunday morning. They did a great job. Everybody was great, but I see that this is definitely a need, and I appreciate your effort to save the money.
Yeah, great news for you, Commissioner Stillwell. The new ones will have liquid spring suspension.
Well, it's needed. We have a lot of dirt roads, and we're rural counties, so...
Beat them up.
Thank you. That's it. There's no other questions? Thank you, chief. Thank you for...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, item O, that would be me. I had a constituent press, if you'd come up, please. That is on page 118 in your packet. Is David Bishop still in the audience? No, I think he's left. Press, there was a concern on, from Mr. David Bishop, who lives down on County Road 315, about removing Marion County line to Cousin Town Road. I forgot to talk to you about that yesterday, and I do apologize for that publicly. Do you see in the future that we could bring that back up?
We can bring it back up in next year's budget. We had $60,000 this year in the striping budget, and we pared it down as best we could to get as many roads done for that budget number.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, is there any other questions on item O for Mr. Tompkins?
Just thank you. This has been long coming.
Yes, it has been.
Really has, years.
We do appreciate what you're doing over there. I know it's a tough job, believe me. Well, I don't know how tough it is, but I know the calls I get. But we do appreciate it, but thank you. You might want to stay there for a moment?
Yeah, I figured I got the next five, so...
Okay. P, Q, R, and S, I'll deal with, except for S, deal with you. So, Commissioner Pickens, I believe you pulled item P, Q, R, is that correct?
Yeah, P, Q, and R. And just wanted, press, to elaborate on, you know, the purchases or leases of those particular pieces of equipment and what were you doing or what were you using before you looked at buying these pieces of equipment and how will it enhance your ability to do your job?
Well, first of all, I'll start with the bucket truck. We are under a maintenance agreement with FDOT to maintain all the traffic signals and street lights on state roads and county roads, too, but we get a pretty substantial dollars from DOT every year for this. As we all know, Mr. Dunning passed away last year, and he had pretty much done that work for all the small counties and cities around. And unfortunately, took all the knowledge with him when he deceased. A lot of the counties have in-house forces that do that, and we're putting together what we call a signal shop to be able to handle all our signal maintenance in-house, and we needed a bucket truck to do that. We went online and talked to several other counties and several people around, and we were able to find a very good used truck for the 49-5. We had budgeted 80,000 for it, so we came in substantially on the budget for this. Soon as we get the purchase order approved, they can deliver it to us probably within about a week or so. And then, we have to go ahead then to hire the personnel to start doing signal maintenance. And also, we wanted to use it for Road and Bridge Department to help in tree trimming and stuff. Unfortunately, we've been putting people on the back of a dump truck bed and lifting them up to cut trees, and when I saw that, I said, "We're not doing that anymore. That's not what we do stuff." So, this will help both departments that we can actually do tree trimming in a very safe manner now and get done what needs to be done, and also have a signal shop that we can respond to signals that are going out. And one of the other things we want to do with the signal shop is replace all the incandescent bulbs with LEDs. We can cut our electric bill almost 90% by going to LED fixtures. And the good part is DOT will furnish a vast majority of this to us. So, it's kind of a win-win for everything, and we've really needed a bucket truck for years. It's one of those pieces of equipment that every time you turn around and say, "Ma'am, if we had a bucket truck, we'd go take care of that," but we don't, but now we'll get one. So, I do appreciate the support on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tompkins? All right. Mr. Pickens, you still have the floor, sir?
Okay, also, press, if you'd just elaborate on the, on Q, on the leasing of the grade all?
What we did was, we asked, and we went through the budget process last year, and we have three grade alls, and they are worn slam out. I don't have any other description for it. We've got them duct taped and bailwired as much as we can. Most of them, some of them are 20-some years old. And the grade all is the workhorse of our whole Road and Bridge Department. That's a machine that does everything for us. We clean out ditches with it. We grade roadside ditches, shoulders, everything with it. So, we needed a new one, and we were able to work with the great southern people and dealing with Stacy Papel and our budget, we were able to work out a lease purchase plan rather than just a straight lease that we turn equipment in. We worked out a lease purchase plan for six years. At the end of six years, the equipment becomes ours. So, it was a good deal for both of us. We get a new machine, which we desperately need. I've had three grade alls down off and on over the last month, just trying to keep them running. So, this is a well-needed piece of equipment for our Road and Bridge Department.
Thank you. Any questions?
If I could, Mr. Chairman. So, press, what happens to the three that we currently own that are worn out?
We're going to try to keep them running as best we can, and hopefully, in the next couple of years, probably we'll try to replace another one. But right now, that gives us, kind of gives us a spare that we can keep going. We have three work crews, three zones, and we have a grade all in each zone. So, now, if one goes down, hopefully, we can keep one running. Has a spare right now, so we can keep our work program going.
Is there room in the program to send the other weaker machines to less strenuous work?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We try to rotate them around and do, like you said, less strenuous work, maybe some roadside shoulder or something that's not as hard on the machine as some of the other work we have to do.
Squeak them through. That's a lot of money.
Yes.
Got to have it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible. Other commissioners? All right. Commissioner Pickens, you still have the floor, sir?
Okay, yeah, and R, I understand that's a unique piece of equipment, I guess, that actually gets down in the...
Yes, sir. It's commonly known, it's made by Kaja Corporation. It's commonly known as a spider, and it looks like a spider. It's got four independent legs. It can actually walk up and go over a 10-foot fence by itself. But it's the kind of machine we can get in and clean out all our outfall ditches. We can clean the ditches that are not roadside. I mean, our grade all's going to only work off an asphalt or a dirt road. They can't get in the woods and the field or where all our outfall ditches are to get those clean or any of our retention ponds, anything of that nature. We don't have anything to get in and clean them out. So, I was familiar with this equipment. When I was at St. John's County, they had one over there, and, Lord, we kept that thing running every day. It is, it's a marvelous piece of equipment, and we've needed something like this over here for years. In fact, Putnam County always came to St. John's County and barred it for two or three weeks when they were kind of in a slow period. So, I kind of wore that welcome out, and I barred it for three weeks when I first got here, and they said, "Wait a minute, we need our machine back." I said, "You can't have it back. We're going to keep it for a while." But anyway, it's a great piece of equipment. It will really see the difference in cleaning out our outfall ditches, which will get our drainage working a lot better than what it is now. Only thing we've got to clean ditches with are inmate crews and weed whackers. But this has got, it's an excavator, it's got a bucket on it, and it's got a mower deck on it. So, we can mow, clean, dig out, get the ditches back to grade, and get the water flowing the way it needs to. And this also is a lease purchase plan, so at the end of six years, we'll own the machinery, and we will, I will make sure we take very good care of this.
You also will straddle the ditch not to cause problems with the ditch.
That's what I'm saying. We can get in the woods, we can straddle ditches. I think it can collapse up like almost six feet, and it can go out to 10 or 12 feet. It can get, it can go in 10-foot of water. It can about go anywhere.
I think the biggest asset is you can keep it on public property and not interfere in private in easement situations. I've seen when we barred St. John's in the past, we had a couple neighborhoods that they just didn't want machinery or men on their pedicured lawns, and this machine will deliver.
We can stay within our easements to get the ditches cleaned and do what we need to without going on private property.
Yeah, I've already, excuse me, I've already heard that, so I think it's a good thing. Question I was going to ask, it could go in 10-foot of water. So, that allowed to even go in some creeks and things like that.
Yeah, we barred the one in St. John's County. We went up into Boswick and got in those canals behind those homes there and cleaned out all the hyacinth.
St. John's Harbor.
Yes.
It was very helpful.
So, it's good. And does it have any way to, if you dredge with it and you don't want to get on private property and all that, does it have a way of, how do you remove it? Do you have a barge or something that you pull behind it?
We can do that, but generally, we just walk it back into an area we can dispose of it, and we pick it up later with another piece with a front-end loader or something that we can get in there. But we try to go back to a public site that we can offload some of the equipment, off the dirt of stuff we pulled out.
Right, so, this is going to help us in a lot of ways with, especially with the constituents that don't want the easement issue.
It'll be a tremendous help for us. Putnam County's needed this for years.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Tompkins? Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you, Alberon. I really appreciate the support for this equipment.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Item S, Mr. Pickens, you have the floor? Or is that Mr. Lible?
That's mine, if I could get... Mr. Hammond's, I just wanted, if you could come to the microphone. Clarification on the money spent to, on this derelict vessel, this particular one, it's very expensive, but how we're going to recoup our money is what I'm concerned with for the public.
Commissioner, can I bring, Mr. Angie up? Our Parks and Recreation Director, would you come up to the microphone also, please?
I believe you're referring to item S. That is not one of our items. Of course, we do deal with a couple of, we are dealing with a couple of both cases, but the two don't necessarily overlap.
I just realized the difference. Okay. Come on up, excuse me.
Mr. Angie, you're up. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This, the amount for the grant is for the five vehicles or vessels for $33,080. The county's only responsible for 25% of that. So, we will be reimbursed $24,810.
Okay, that's a reimbursement amount. All right. So, this is the agreement with FWC?
That's correct.
In their program?
Yes, this is the actual contract for execution. The board, I believe it was in October, approved the application. So, we're just going to be out of pocket the $8,280 to remove five.
That's a great bargain.
Yeah, but we need to clean those vessels up, so... Commissioners? Commissioners, any questions?
That's good. Appreciate it.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, we have pulled item OEFPQRS for discussion. We have discussed them.
Move approval.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stillwell, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much. Our public hearing that should have started at nine fifteen will now start. Page number two oh seven. Mr. Leary, resolution electing to use uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a few comments to create a segue on this. Mr. Manning may have some additional comments he'd like to make. This is a routine resolution that is on the agenda for the board's consideration on an annual basis. Before we talk about what the resolution is, maybe it's important to talk about what the resolution is not. The resolution is not any consideration to implement any new MSBUs. All this resolution does is to provide the county with the means to utilize the tax collector's services to collect any assessment associated with an MSBU, an MSBU being a municipal service benefit unit, of which the county has a few in effect now, mostly for road maintenance and road paving projects that have been approved in previous years, where the tax collector's services are used to collect the amounts due on an annual basis that are added to the tax bill. That is what this resolution allows for. It allows for the continuation of the tax collector's services in that regard. It also allows for the tax collector to have her services made available to collect any future MSBUs that the board may wish to consider going forward. So this resolution, there's always some confusion about what this resolution intends to do. This resolution does not create any new MSBUs. If there are any new MSBUs to be considered by the board in the future, there is a process that you will go through dictated by statute that will require you to undergo public hearings, informational meetings, before you take any formal action, before it's absolutely formulated and provided for. So this is a fairly straightforward resolution, simply providing for the utilization of the tax collector's services to collect MSBUs.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Any questions from our commissioners? This is a public hearing, so I believe we start for those who are four. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
It is a general public hearing as opposed to quasi-judicial nature, so whatever procedure you would like to utilize is appropriate.
If the public would like to speak in favor of, please come forward. All right. Opposing this, please also come forward. Please come if you're, please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Yes, Roxanna Regan Weeks, 2509 Krill Avenue, Palatka. I would like some clarification on this and the agenda and the documents I read in the agenda. It says it's for non-ad valorem assessments. I didn't see where it's restricted to new MSB, or, you know, any MSBUs only. So I saw that it was to take effect in November of 2017. I also read the list of items that it provides funding for, and several of them are a duplication of what we approved the BPP sale, extra sales, penny sales tax for last spring in 2015. So I'm wondering if, you know, is it strictly MSBUs, or is there an across, or could there be, because of this resolution, an across-the-board, non-ad valorem assessment on everybody's property?
Ms. Weeks, this gave me heartburn last year, if you remember, because I didn't understand it correctly either. But clearly, if we pass any new MSBUs, we're going to come to public hearings first.
Right.
Okay? And then we're going to vote on it after that. So we are not establishing anything new as of today.
Right.
So that's, we're in good shape at that.
Okay. So we have no across-the-board, everybody in the county increase coming because of this?
No. Nothing new is happening right now. Just the current MSBUs that are in place, that we currently have are in play, and that's all.
Can I ask one thing, though? Why would there be, in those MSBUs, is that restrictive to, like, those property owners and those neighborhoods that those improvements would be done at in the future?
Some MSBUs are area-specific. For example, my area was a grading MSBU. We took it out, made it a paving MSBU. We have one more year to pay for that. I believe it's one more year, and then we're off the hook for that paving. So yes, they're area-specific.
Okay.
And some are county-wide. For example, you could say the garbage fee is an MSBU because it's a county-wide.
Yes.
Done to specific areas outside municipalities, or could include municipalities.
Yeah. That's why I didn't understand why the inclusions were for the items that are covered under the BPP infrastructure set taxes that we pay, you know? So I guess it just depends on what they're going to do in the future, and we'll have those public hearings individually.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
We have, yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, Ms. Weeks, I'll let you know, too, me being new, that when this came before me, that I was like Larry. It did stress me, so the whole staff got questioned heavily, and I looked up everything I could to make sure, exactly your same concerns that I had. So I investigated as hard as I could because I was losing sleep over it, so, but it was explained to me, and even every word that I didn't understand, I had made sure that somebody explained what the words meant to me.
All right. Other commissioners? All right. Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Mr. Hotteling, would you please come up, state your name and your address?
Tim Hotteling, 105 Riverside Way, San Mateo. Like confirmation, if you will, or a point is, as I recall, last year, there was a change in the ordinance that defined a MSB unit as including everything that is not within an incorporated area of the county. And that was the mechanism that allowed the non-valorem taxes to be assessed, everything that isn't within a city. My understanding, then, it would, my logic, if you will, which is regularly challenged, nevertheless, my logic would be you don't need anything new because you've already got a MSBU that's been defined that would allow the application of taxes. Am I incorrect? Mr. Manning?
Mr. Manning, would you answer?
Not sure I follow the question. The requirement is that this be done yearly so that they can buy billing.
I didn't say anything about the requirement. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. You might want to research. My understanding is, the last time this thing came up, about a year ago, it was a change in definition, and the definition became an MSB unit being everything that is not an incorporated portion of the county. And that allows the imposition of non-valorem taxes, which means you don't have to have any new MSBU because you already have one, so that you could carry forth your action.
But, Mr. Hotteling, I believe that we're talking about even current MSBUs, and this is an annual filing that we file. So it gives us the ability to say the-
Yes, sir. I'm responding to Mr. Leary's statement of circumstances, and I understand the history of the MSBUs, the little, you know, little communities getting together and making their life better. But it was expanded as a grand plan because you've run out of, because you're bumping into the cap of the property taxes. And I understand it, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. But I-
I think I can perhaps answer.
Go ahead, Ms. Papel. Thank you.
An MSBU, within each MSBU that's passed, the MSBU defines the area with which it benefits. So you can have a tiny MSBU, you can have a county-wide MSBU, you can have an unincorporated only MSBU, you can have an unincorporated plus selected cities MSBU. Within each MSBU, there is a definition of the area that it benefits.
Yes, ma'am. I'm replying, and my comment, and I'll leave it at that, is that this topic has already been passed by previous council, and it's not necessarily as presented as a bunch of little ones, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotteling. Anybody else would like to speak about this item? Ms. Smith, if you'll come forward. Mr. Swing, if you'll stay on deck.
Good morning. And it's really interesting to see someone by the name of Larry in the chairman's seat. Congratulations. Also, congratulations to our new commissioners, and wow, you guys have offered to come in for a job that's going to take some really big shoulders. So God bless you for being brave to do that.
Ms. Smith, we need your name and address for the record.
Janet Smith, 60 Carefree Drive, Wheelaco.
Thank you.
Yeah. Reading the terms in this resolution also gave me great heartburn because it is exactly some of the same exact things that is in the Better Place Plan. However, there is another consideration that does concern me, and it is the process in which these things are done. And I'm not blaming any of you guys because a lot of you have not even been here to be involved in this. But to go back and look at some history, in 2015, when we got the Better Place Plan resolution, the citizens were given less than twenty-four-hour notice of a public meeting. When we arrived at the public meeting, the wording had already been changed, and we were presented with this, like it was already done. So within less than twenty-four hours' notice, we were handed something that we really didn't have time to think about. Now, this is real interesting because at the time, the Better Place Plan did not sunset for almost two years. So why did we call an emergency meeting on an ordinance that did not sunset for two years? Why could we not slow down and take the time to see what we were passing? We had the time to do that. Now, you know, the Better Place Plan, there's some value in it because people who don't pay property taxes, they can contribute by the Better Place Plan. But we didn't really have a voice in the process. And if you think about it, at that meeting, given the time constraints we are given in order to get on an agenda to speak and to discuss this fully, we didn't have that opportunity. So fast forward, and a week later, we got the vote to go on with the referendum, and we all know what happened. Well, let's take that forward. You know, when I read that thing, and I said, "November 2017, okay, what's the rush?" Well, again, that's the question here, because Putnam County cannot afford to do these things that involve finances and make any mistakes. We are at the point that the citizens are kind of like turnips, and you can't keep getting blood out of a turnip, seriously. So you don't want to kill the citizens that are supposed to pay this bill. So as an alternative, I would like to point out that there are some awesomes citizens in this room that come and take their time to hear, that have researched, that have studied, that have educated themselves. And they have some ideas for solutions, thinking outside the box, that's not just, "Okay, we got to raise taxes, we got to have another MSBU." They have other solutions. And one wonderful example of this is a letter I'm holding that I believe was distributed to each one of you from Mr. Tim Hotteling. And he is looking at this, and he has defined some problems that I have not heard discussed here. And he also is proposing some solutions. So what I'm saying to you guys, previously, you've missed a huge opportunity to utilize the citizen talent in this community, to not only define the problems, because you can't fix a problem unless you fully decide, define it, and admit that you have a problem. And then you got to look for creative solutions. And who has more to benefit than those of us who spend our money and own Putnam County property? So I'm asking you guys, when one of these agenda items that coming up next that will give an opportunity for citizens to actually be part of the solution, please listen. You know, there were two incumbents that the voters did not return to the panel up there. That's a clear message that we won't change. One way to change this county is actually listen to and consider real solutions from the citizens who have the most to gain in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Commissioners, any comments? All right. Ms. Smith, we do appreciate your comments, and we look forward to thinking outside the box. And is there anybody else that would like to speak? Mr. Swing, I'm sorry, you were on deck. Please come up. If you will, state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Ken Swing, 126 Elderberry Lane, Palatka. I understand everything that Rick and Stacy said about this. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There you go.
The room has a bad acoustic, too, so.
This is for an MSBU as well as MSTU? We don't have TUs anymore?
Well, this doesn't have anything to do with an MSTU.
All right. The city of Palatka, I came up last year at the same time when we did this. My concern was the city passed their fire tax, and we had this discussion about the fire tax here. I am still with the understanding that this body has a consultant working on a fire tax that would affect all the properties in Putnam County?
Well, the county has engaged a consultant, but the consultant is not working on a fire tax. The consultant is working on the possibility of a fire assessment that would eliminate the fire tax. But that's, won't be considered until-
Later.
-May seventeen.
May seventeenth?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. Well, that's, twenty seventeen is three weeks away, right?
Well, when the consultant finishes his work, then that recommendation will be presented to the board, and then if the board chooses to move that forward, you know, there will be the hearings and the discussion and the public information meetings, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So we're not, we're not going to do anything until you get some kind of recommendation from whoever this consultant is.
That is correct.
And just like in the city, when the city did a way, we wanted to lower our millage rate in the city and replace it with a fire tax, the net result was an increase, not a even or decrease.
Well, I'm not defending what the city did, but what the city did was, the city created a fire assessment, not a fire tax. They created a fire assessment and thus lowered some of their millage rate.
Fees, assessment, it all comes out of, to be a tax at the end.
Well, I mean, it's a matter, it's a matter of semantics, but-
Yes. Okay. But we're not doing this at least for some time in the future.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swing. All right. Is there anybody else? Then we will close our public hearing. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
No, a motion to, for this resolution.
I'll go ahead and move.
Buddy, put that microphone. There you go, buddy.
Yeah. I'll move for a motion.
You move approval of the resolution?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Goddard moved approval. That's proper procedure. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Resolution is passed. The ayes have it, the resolution is passed. Thank you very much. Next item on your agenda today is item number eight. Rick Haven, page number 211, Charter County Government. Mr. Haven, please come forward.
Rick Haven, 115 Delta Circle, Crescent City, Florida. First, I wanna crank, congratulate Buddy Goddard and Tommy Stillwell and Bill Pickens on their election to the Putnam County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Across the United States, voters turned out to change the course of America. Voters rejected politicians in favor of businessmen who could look to the best interests of taxpayers and conservative values and make America great again. Subsequently, Putnam County voters turned out in large numbers to change the course of Putnam County and elected the three of you who are not politicians, but rather businessmen who understand profit and loss of business, the pitfalls of reckless spending, and the need for a balanced budget if businesses survive. We hope that you understand that running Putnam County is a business and requires a business sense to run it properly. And we are hopeful that you will do this in an open and transparent manner. For far too long, Putnam County has operated as a socialist democracy. To quote Ronald Reagan, socialism can provide you with shelter, fill your belly with beans and bacon, treat you when you're ill. All the things are guaranteed to both prisoners and slaves. The taxpayers of Putnam County are neither and deserve to be treated better. We have bike paths that generate no revenue towards their expense and benefit few Putnam County taxpayers. Conservation and green belt schemes erode the county ad valorem tax base while increasing the tax burdens on homeowners paying taxes. The half million dollars of yearly funding to the Chamber of Commerce as an economic development agency has done little in return for those taxpayer dollars over 30 years, due in part, I believe, to the protectionist attitude of the members of that agency. And lastly, Putnam County's debt is some 57 million and perhaps another 40 million in unfunded liabilities that must be addressed. To again paraphrase Ronald Reagan, it's time for the county government to stay out of our wallets, let us manage our own personal budgets, and you mind yours. However, the pass board had levied increases in landfill fees when there were less expensive choices. The pass board continued to purchase land parcels intended for parks we don't need, removing thousands of acres of tax, from the tax rolls with no plan as to where those funds are to come from, and then complained repeatedly about the endemic tax base. The pass board instituted new taxes in the form of the fire tax and now seeks to change the nomenclature of that to expand it, but without, so far without public input. The pass board borrowed from its emergency fund for the last four years to balance the annual budget rather than entail its spending. The pass board itself has shown itself to be incapable of addressing many of these concerns and abuses brought by taxpayers before them in the past to a point that those same taxpayers have no avenue but to appeal to Tallahassee last year, ending in an embarrassing state audit of the county to which we still don't know the outcome. Transparency and forthforth coming information that was non-existent from the pass board, requests for expenditures of public dollars given to the Chamber of Commerce are ignored. Howington recently requested such in the last month. The past commissioner told him to look to the chamber and they ignored my request. My request was answered by a letter from Douglas and Hemstons saying they have no obligation to give me anything. All this points to the fact that Putnam County taxpayers need a greater voice in the affairs of Putnam County, my reason for being here today. The voters of Putnam County sent the three of you here believing you to be honest and trustworthy men. And I'm here to ask you and this board to appoint a citizens committee to review and report back to the board the advantages and benefits of a charter county government for Putnam County. And begin the process of writing a charter for the Putnam County and time to be presented to the voters in the next election cycle. Other than St. John's County, all our neighboring counties have charter county governments or otherwise called home rule governments. Here within Putnam County, Palatka, Interlochen, Crescent City, Willacca, and Ponah Park, the citizens of those municipalities are governed by individual charters and not the central county government. Since Florida statehood in 1845, all cities and towns were permitted to write their own charters rather than being governed by the state legislature hundreds of miles away. Likewise, the Florida Legislature and Florida statute 125.5 states, "Any county not having a chartered form or consolidated government may pursuant to the provisions of state statutes 125.6 through 125.64 locally initiate and adopt a majority vote of the qualified electors of the county, a home rule charter." Today, more than 75% of Florida citizens live within a charter government. The state legislature realized that situations the people in a given area or the topography of an area within the state may require a government suited to them rather than the whims of Tallahassee. And so should the citizens of Putnam County exercise this option. The state statutes require a committee of no less than 11 and no more than 15 citizens. I've assembled here today no less a group of citizens that may be well-known to this board and have an interest in being a part of this committee, charter committee. If you allow me to introduce them. Myself, Rick Haven. Janet Smith. McKinley Evans. Concerned citizens of South Putnam County. I talked to Harry Banks, he's not here? Okay. Roxanne Weeks. Jim Krim. He's a great IT guy from Flora Home. Tom Williams, I talked to him. Bernice Goodham from Pomona Park. Tim Howington. And Robert Lye. This group of 10 allows you, the commissioners, to appoint one each rounding out the committee of 15 citizens. And the charter committee could begin meetings in January. And that's my presentation. I would hope you would, somebody would make a resolution to get this started.
Thank you, Mr. Haven. Is there any questions from the board to Mr. Haven?
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lye, please.
At any point, has you and your group reached out for a, more of a consensus from groups? Civic groups, student bodies, Qantas Clubs, Rotaries? Have you done any of that kind of consensus building to this point?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll just make a comment, Mr. Haven, that I have been reading since you approached me about this. I'm not fully knowledgeable on the situation, but I have been reading. I see that there are 55 counties that are not charter counties and 20 are, and the state of Florida, am I correct?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven counties aren't and 20 are.
Forty-seven are not.
Sixty-seven counties in Florida.
Yeah, 67, 40 are not. But, so, I've been, have been reading on the, on this, on this. What I've only got so far. Just letting you know, I'm informing myself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pickens, did you, you have any comments?
Okay, Mr. Haven, I'm intrigued by the charter county government. I will tell you that. I do think, though, that we need to allow these commissioners to get their feet on the ground a little bit. I would like to bring this to a workshop meeting and gather, because it's gonna take a budgetary item, correct? We gotta fund a commission if we go down that route. We also need the surrounding counties. I'd like to see all their charters. We can do that and we can dedicate a workshop for that in the near future that we can move this item ahead or at least discuss it in more length at that time. If that's agreeable to our commissioners, that's what I'd like to see us do. Possibly sometime in January, we could go ahead and call for a workshop meeting on this topic.
Would it include these people over?
If we have a workshop, it's a public meeting and everybody would be included to come. Everybody in the county would be included to come. But this is a big step and this would be something that would identify the future of Putnam County. And then we have to get a commission, we appoint a commission. I think there's three, three things we talked about yesterday. One was appointing the commission, the other was petitions, and then there was a third one that you were checking in on.
Yeah, the three, you're right, that there's really three options for the charter. To establish a charter, one is to have a charter review commission set up and it would be made up of members of the community appointed either by the board or selected by legislative delegation if, if it comes forward as a petition. And that is one of the ways to bring that forward would, Mr. Haven would get the required number of signatures from members of the community in a petition. And in that case, the board would then be required to appoint a, a commission to study the topic. The other option is for this board to go ahead and pass a resolution establishing a charter commission. The third way of establishing a charter county would be for this board to come up with a charter on its own and then propose that charter in a referendum vote. So, those are the three ways of getting to that end.
Thank you. I'd also like to include our constitutional officers, and if you don't mind, I would like to recognize Ms. Linda Myers, our honorable tax collector just came in the room, so... But I'd like to have, thank you, Ms. Myers, like to have all of these at the table at the January workshop that we could have. Is that okay, commissioners?
It is.
Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haven.
Okay, I'm just trying to avoid the, the stack committee like the SWAB meeting was, you know, I'm... And that's the reason I've asked these people. We've talked about us among us. A couple people I just barely know, but I talk to them, I talk to other people about them. And I try to get people, you know, from different walks of life to be involved.
And we appreciate that, but we will also, when that time comes, it's being televised right now. I'm sure there's people watching that would go, "I'd like to be there and listen to that and maybe lend a hand." So, we would expect a lot more than what you've gotten and we appreciate what you've gotten so far. Look forward in January, we'll schedule a workshop and we'll dedicate it to this topic, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haven. All right. We will take no action on the county charter government at this moment. The next item is Fay Sparkman, the liche at the landfill, or landfill liche, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Sparkman.
This time we need John.
Would you put that microphone closer to you?
The other person that could not be here is Reverend Kaymore, because John Spells and Reverend Kaymore who brought this attention to the people and the public. And I made a packet for each one of you.
Ms. Sparkman, you'll have to give your name and address for the record. Mr. Spell, would you hand those to our clerk, please, and she will pass those out? Thank you.
You have to give them your name and address. They need your name and...
John Spells, 106 Citrus Lane, East Palatka.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. And Ms. Sparkman, your address, please?
103 Flamengo Boulevard, Interlochen, Florida.
Thank you. Proceed, please.
Okay, when you open the packet, you'll see a picture of a truck. And John's going to explain about that truck and how he got that picture.
All right, I know we got some new people that might not know what's been going on, but my thing is to try to see a difference being made in what has been continually to go on for the longest. The disposing of the liche into the drains and stuff, I find it still to be a problem, because if you just can look at that truck, that truck really, for the amount that I've seen it come down the road, and I can't fault the driver of it sloshing out, but I look at the trucks that leave the landfill at, sometimes when they do haul it out, I've never seen none of that residue all on the side of the truck. I've never seen the truck come down the road with it running out along the side. And I, I just feel like, you know, there's something better need to be done with that liche rather than carrying it, bringing it into town and dumping it into the drain, sending it out to the treatment center and getting partial sediments of it wrapped back in the sludge that they bring right back to the landfill. If, you know, if you look at it, you ain't doing enough of circulation pollution throughout the city, because they say the drains and the pipes throughout the city is, is sealed and it's really impossible to believe if you ride down some of the back streets where the water actually goes through the sewer system. There's nowhere in the world you can make me believe that, that water is properly being disposed of. But to me, to send it out on a truck that's got the mud flaps, even the truck that you got now, it don't even have mud flaps on it, the corrosion from the chemicals wasting and spilling on it done, just ate the metal up, but you know, I guess the county still just use what they got. But I feel like there's something better need to be done about it. But every time we speak about it, everybody try to sweep it under the rug. But, you know, it's time to make some changes. We got some new commissioners, you know. I know there's got to be enough money in the budget to kinda do a little better than what we doing, because we can't keep continuing to do the same thing. Because every time I see that truck, you can see the liche wasting out of it. And you know, really, for them to be disposing of it in front of a daycare center, you know, it really makes you feel kinda bad when you got those infant kids going in there and you got families bringing the kids there and not knowing what actually being dumped right across the street. And you know, look like the county would have a little more consideration for the people to have a better system, a better disposal site, or a better way of handling it. So, I'm hoping with new commissioners in that they do something a little different than continuing to do the same thing, just to get by on a way of getting rid of your liche by accepting sludge and you ain't doing nothing but just rotating the stuff round and round in a circle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spell.
Okay, John came to me with this and so, one morning, we were sitting in McDonald's and he said, "Look, there goes this truck. It's slopping this stuff out and cars all behind it. That takes the paint off of the cars." So, I said to him, "Okay, where's it going now?" "It was going to Pine Street behind McDonald's. There's a great big gigantic daycare center, there's the FPNL plant." So, I talked to some of the FPNL drivers and I said, "Do you drink city water?" "Absolutely no." So, on Monday of last week, on your second page, you'll see pictures of this drain. If you look at it real close, you can see how it caved in and how they've had to put pavement around it, because this is where they dump. So, I talked to the man who owns the property that I'm allowed to go on right there. Last week, conveniently, the truck didn't come every day. And Mr. Gas took a drop in hauling it out of the county from 13 cents a gallon to nine cents a gallon. On your next page, you'll see this picture. There was an 18-wheeler overturned on I-95. They called the hazmat team out and shut down I-95 because they consider it hazardous waste. And on your next thing, you'll see the picture where the pipes in the city are 130 years old. My husband's a master mason and he said, "All this stuff that put the pipes together back 130 years ago has disintegrated." So, all this stuff that you're putting in the drains is going into people's ground. The last thing is your health thing. The state of Tallahassee announced about two months ago, Putnam County has the biggest cancer center in the state of Florida. My husband loves to drink coffee. My husband loves to drink coffee. He was never sick until he retired. Every day, we came to Dunkin' Donuts for coffee. Who has leukemia? My husband. Is it from drinking this water? I don't know. I have forbid my family or friends to drink any water in the city, no iced tea, and as of this week, my husband's not buying no more coffee in this city. We have got to stop and take into consideration your children, grandchildren, my great-grandchildren. Stop it. Nine cents a gallon, is it worth all these children's lives to get cancer? I don't think so. Please, you have got to order Mr. Gass to have it all hauled out of here the right, correct way. The other thing is, I do have a video that Reverend K. Moore and John Spells did for us. If she puts it on back there, you wouldn't be able to see it, so I'm just going to give it to you. That way, you all can view it at one time or another. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Sparkman, if you'll give it to Tony, she'll give it to us. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sparkman, did you also provide that information to Tony for the record? The rest of the, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Sparkman or Mr. Spell?
Just one, if I could. You have been meeting with the State Department of Environmental Protection at the Health Department, and they have disagreed with your personal belief in what has transpired here. And could you share that with us?
Okay. Isn't it funny that on November the eighth, the lady from the Sheriff's Department got up here and said the water report came back and all their sinks are corroded? Something's wrong in this picture.
That wasn't my question, but that's okay.
Other commissioners?
Yeah.
All right. Roxanne, Ms. Weeks, I'll lie to you.
Roxanne Regan Weeks. I met with, through Representative Van Zant, the state officials from DEP and EPA. I will, what it boiled down to in a nutshell was, the pipes that they're talking about in the city, they are ancient, but what the main issue was is that many of the pipes have been lined in the city. The location they're dumping at currently, on Pine Street, is unlined. The nearest line section that would travel east to the river and then down back to the Brown's Landing wastewater plant was on the other side of Seventeen by Flag Funeral Home and the Housing District there. That's where the line pipes start. The DEP and the EPA told us at the last meeting we had that they would look at stopping the Pine Street dump and make sure it went into line sections throughout, because from there on, it was done. I'm going to address what Commissioner Libley said about the DEP and EPA findings. I will tell you this. I, on the internet, at their sites, at the DEP and EPA sites, I found the water quality test published by them for the Palaca wastewater treatment plant for the last ten quarters. I'm sorry, twelve quarters. Ten of the twelve quarters, they failed. In that, I noticed that in one quarter, the levels of silver were six hundred and times the allowable level, but there was also one that was seven hundred and fourteen thousand times the allowed level of silver. I couldn't figure out where in the world this came from. I go to the wastewater plant, Mr. McCann took me on the tour. I said, "Look, here's this printout from the EPA and all, and they're saying this." He explained it to me. He said, "Yeah, they had to track it down to the pump station. It was coming from the hospital." So that was probably two years ago when I did that. When we recently met with the officials with Representative Van Zant from DEP and EPA, the first thing was, well, they were going to check into it. Then they come back and they tell me that it was bad lab results. Didn't produce any documents, didn't have any notification from the lab saying we made a mistake. They, you know, they had no answer for why Mr. McCann, the plant manager there, told me and confirmed these levels of silver from the hospital and how they had tracked it through the pump stations and all of that. So their end findings were that everything was okey-dokey, it was the lab's fault, and they have since changed their results on the website to show every quarter passed. But they had already admitted two years ago it didn't. So I'm not, I don't think we're going to get any solution out of them. That's why we keep bringing it to you guys locally. At the very least, this commission can make sure that, you know, and they also told us at our last meeting that they would try to find us funding and things like that to redo water pipes in the city of Palaca. Right now, we just feel it's imperative that the leche be dumped only in the lined sections to go to the water plant. Because this, you know, as she said, this is over on Pine Street, there's residences around there, there's a daycare there, there are wells in the area. I actually went with representatives, John and I did, that day, there's a, what do you call it, John?
Masonry.
Yeah, the Stucko place, it's right there on Pine Street, they tested their well. There was a man, we walked up with them to this man's residence. He told us, we asked, you know, "Do you have wells? Can we test it?" and all that. And his well in the backyard, he had to shut it down because of the contamination's in it years ago. So they had to do a new well. Now, it's an issue. When you're dumping, we're talking heavy metals that are in this leche. Arsenic, lead, just a plethora of things, man, in addition to petroleum solvents, chemicals, everything. And if you're putting it in a section of pipe to go to the wastewater plant, it has to travel a distance, you know, and not really dilute, they don't break down, but it just makes it easier for the plant to accept it in such quantities when they're dumping thousands of gallons out of the tanker truck. And they, if you have cracked, broken pipes, which we know exist in the city of Palaca, both on the, you know, the wastewater treatment side and the storm drain side, then you're going to have leakage. I mean, I can go down St. John's Avenue, and I can see the dips and know that underneath it, that's where the pipes have collapsed, and they've dug them up and patched, and you know, it's a lot of issues. The city, it's going to cost them eighteen million dollars to redo everything. But in the meantime, until somebody comes up with funding or finds a better way of doing this, either, you know, I really can't say with certainty that all the money is available to dump the leche. It depends. Every time you have a rain, you have five trucks running a day, you know, after the rains. And it's always a continuous thing. They're allowed to dump twenty-five thousand gallons per day into the system, although the wastewater plant can't handle it. But they're allowed to do that much, and then anything else has to be trucked up to Jacksonville and disposed of at the hazmat place. Because Mr. Gass has been able to bargain it down to nine cents a gallon instead of thirteen. And if I could ask Mr. Gass, does that include their pickup?
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if that includes the, the nine cents a gallon includes that eighteen-wheelers' pickup from Jacksonville and there and back.
We will give Mr. Gass an opportunity to.
Okay, okay. Because, you know, nine cents a gallon seems very reasonable. We pay high landfill assessments. I understand that's for different issues, and land sale closures and mining and other things, but it's just that for right now, until we can get rid of all of that leche by, and you know, they haven't interlocal agreement with the city. County gets to dump their leche free in the city's wastewater lines, city in turn gets to dump their sludge free back out of the landfill. So it's until that occurs and those issues stop, if they could at least immediately make sure they dump it in the line sections until the money and everything else can be figured out.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Mr. Gass? Ms. Sparkman, I'm going to call Mr. Gass right now.
Okay.
If you don't mind. Mr. Gass? You've heard the conversation today?
Yes, I have.
I guess one of the things are, can we possibly dump into a line pipe? And the other conversation would be around the cost of hauling that to Jacksonville, a lesser fee that you negotiated with.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Good. And a description of leche, please.
Okay. Leche, if you look at the news article that Ms. Sparkman just handed out, is wastewater. It is not toxic waste, as people claim. As a matter of fact, the last sample that we had, when we did the laboratory analysis, the only thing that was exceeded in what we were putting into the system from the discharge requirements for the city of Palatka Sewer was iron. We have tons and tons of iron. But we also have that in our monitoring wells, which are up gradient, so the water basically and soils that we use have tons of iron in it. That.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gass? The thing that I want to relay to the public is what liquids go in our landfill with the liner. That's important for the makeup of the leche that we're dealing with particularly. What comes out of our landfill, not a general description of somewhere else, like petroleum products, pesticides, household goods, none of these things that are heavy metals, they don't go into our landfill.
We don't allow those in our landfill. Anything that is a hazardous or a toxic material, as defined by federal and state regulation, is not allowed to go into a landfill. We take household waste. We try to have bleach, those kinds of things, you know, pesticides. We've got a household hazardous waste area for people to drop those off, lead-acid batteries. All those things are dropped off in one place. But we don't have heavy metals showing up in our leche. We don't have benzene. We don't have toxic residues, as has been claimed, show up. Now, the city of Palatka and Putnam County have had a mutual agreement since nineteen ninety-five. Basically, I tell them where to put their sludge, they tell us where to dispose of the leche. I do not have that decision. That decision is made by the city of Palatka. It is their system that the leche is placed in. I can't just go say, "I'm going to go put it over here." It is them that direct us where the leche goes. Same as when they bring their sludge out to the landfill, I direct them where to place it. We had a meeting with Representative Van Zant with both the wastewater and the solid waste representatives from DEP. All of them looked at the current situation, and they basically had no issues. There has been no directions to me for any changes. There has been no directions to the city that I'm aware of of any changes. And that was all an organized meeting by Representative Van Zant with all of the parties to be present. Cost, right now, if we send everything there, that's going to be five hundred thousand dollars a year extra. If you look from nineteen ninety-five to now, that'd be about ten million dollars. I don't have that extra money. It would have to come from somewhere. And more than likely, it would be an increase in the cost to the individual households to help pay for that. I am looking at some alternatives for leche disposal. Some of them are fairly new. There's a new evaporation system that basically has these high-intensity fabrics. It's almost like the skin of a fish, you know, after you've scaled it, how it's got all those little ripples and everything, and there's just thousands of them in a line, and the stuff just drips over top of it and it evaporates away, instead of leaving you with something to dispose of. These are things that I'm looking at, but that's still a ways into the future. Again, I do not control the leche disposal. I do take it there, under an agreement that the county has made with the city to mutually exchange our stuff. The city is the one who tells me where and how much I'm allowed to place into their system.
Thank you, Mr. Gass. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gass?
Yes, sir. Now, of course, I'm new, and I've been reading about that. I have some information on leche in them. And basically, we take it, it goes to the municipal sewage works, correct?
Correct. Both here, if we, what we send to Jacksonville, basically, we're sending the exact same thing we send here to their wastewater system.
But it goes to the city of Palatka's wastewater system.
That's correct.
All right. But we're currently dropping in a pipe, and it's draining from the Pine Street area all the way to municipal services.
Correct.
So the traveling doesn't affect the, it doesn't make it a better product by the time it gets to the waterworks.
Yes, it does.
It does, so drainage through the pipes does dissipate.
What happens is, you have what's called a slug in the system when you drop a, you know, three thousand or seven thousand gallon load in there. That is the only thing in there. It moves down the system as a, what they refer to in the wastewater as a slug. Now, all the pipes that come in help add the biological portions, the feces, the toilet paper, the other things.
Bacteria and stuff.
That the bacteria and the plant need to live.
Okay. Just want to understand that. I just want to see why we're dumping it here and it's draining down, if it could just go directly. But the effect of it in the pipes flowing does.
That adds food for the bacteria at the plant, because if you just had this whole thing just move through the plant.
Natural decantination of it as it travels.
Right. They would have no food at the plant for the bacteria to break down, so the bacteria would go into shock until they built back up from food. It's like just having plain water with nothing in it. That has a bad effect on the sewer plant.
Okay. That was just something I just wanted to clarify, so I would understand.
All right, commissioners. Mr. Gass, about a year ago, we had this discussion, and I was reading a periodical about shredded tires capping landfills and then pumping that water, the leche, back over the tires, and kind of a continuous loop. And that seems to work in some areas for the evaporation to take place. What I'd like for you to do in the meantime, and if it's allowable by this board, is to maybe put some alternatives together that we could see, that we could see if we haul all the leche out, what that would cost. You said five hundred thousand?
Extra, yes.
If we shredded tires, what can we do? This new membrane you talked about, what that would do for us? And I think you're building ponds out there to collect some of that, settling ponds.
We're looking at, like I said, the biggest problem we have is iron, because a good portion of the wastewater remnants that come out of the city of Palatka's wastewater treatment plant are used to irrigate the golf course that's used to irrigate cemeteries. And having orange-stained sand in your sand traps or orange-stained headstones is not a good thing. So that's what they shut us down for sometimes, is when we, when they're starting to get too much iron in their reused wastewater.
And I met with a golf pro out there, you know, a year ago about this, and that was his complaint, too, that we were kind of killing the grass out there. So I think we need to look at alternatives, and maybe at the next meeting, if you don't mind, you could bring back a one-page fact sheet.
Okay.
With us prior to that, and have it available, the different alternatives we could be looking at going into the future of two thousand seventeen.
We did request at our last renewal, we had two hundred gallons a day was our allowable recirculation, what you're talking about, putting it back up on the landfill. The problem with that is, we're not really big enough to allow recirculation. It is a system that... with that is we're not really big enough to allow recirculation. It is a system that most places are going away from now, because what you end up with is a concentrated material at the end. And generally, that has to go through a reverse osmosis treatment system, which that gets to a very expensive process that most of your wastewater treatment plants can't handle.
Right now, though, with the dry water, the dry weather, excuse me, you probably are seeing less leachate coming out of that landfill.
That's why the truck went.
We had 12 and 1/2 inches of rain during the hurricane, and we are still catching up from that. 12 and 1/2 inches percolating through the...
Wish my leg would have got 12 and 1/2 inches.
But I will get a list of alternatives for it.
Any other questions? Mr. Gas, we appreciate your opportunity. Ms. Sparkman, real quick, we've got to try to move forward and wrap this up.
Okay. I'm going to tell you, I've been researching this for four years, when John brought it to my attention. The EPA in Jacksonville thought it was a big joke. So my husband went on the computer and found out that they have a boss over them. And when I went to Mr. Van Zant, he said, "What are you talking about?" I said, "We have Georgia." So we contacted EPA in Georgia, and that's when they shut the landfill down for two weeks, I believe, to see how much it really took out of there. So it's sad that we have to come to this point. So then I talked to Merrill Hill, Terrell Hill, and the other, his, whatever the other guy is with him, and he told me they need 18 to 28 million dollars to replace the pipes in the city. To me, I believe there is a place in the place here that there is a lime pipe. So why they're not using that, I don't know. But until the city can find the money to replace these pipes, I think you owe it to our children and grandchildren to do something about this and talk about it in a workshop. Call Georgia EPA, because you'll get your answers faster than you will out of Jacksonville.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to take a three-minute break.
Next question.
Meeting this morning, we have a 9:50 certain. It's 10:58, so we're only an hour and eight minutes behind schedule. We're doing pretty good compared to our norms. So, Ms. Kelly, thank you very much. So we have a proposed road closing, unnamed road and floor home Orchard Track. Mr. Phil Leary, agent for Mrs. Kelly. Mr. Leary, you have the floor, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Ms. Kelly, it's good to see you here.
Commissioners, good morning. Phil Leary, Leary Governmental Affairs Consultants, 240 South Air Belloway, St. Johns. Very simple antiquated subdivision. Roads were never developed, never opened for any use. And so in conjunction with some expanded operations we're going to be doing out there, we're requesting you close the road.
All right. Thank you.
Phil, I just have one question.
Mr. Goddard, you're recognized.
Thank you. On this, on this map...
Yes, sir.
Now, we're, it shows in yellow the area between Ms. Kelly's property. But it also, and it's just a notation, that's an unnamed road. We are only talking about the area in yellow.
Correct. The contiguous area, the only the areas that lie between her properties to the, I guess that'd be the north and south. There are two other properties along that, the extended designated easement. And essentially, we contacted them and asked them, said, "Hey, makes sense to, you know, close it all." Never, never got a response from one. The other was bank-owned property. The bank said, "We're not interested." So, you know, we did reach out. It makes a lot of sense, certainly from a land use and a planning standpoint. You know, quite frankly, I know Mr. Hammond has a lot of work to do. But in Clay County, when I was planning director there, we took all these antiquated subdivisions and closed all the roads and just did away so we don't have to go through a two-month process to do something that, you know, holds up a multimillion-dollar project.
Yes. What year was the subdivision, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Oh, it's...
It's really old, isn't it?
Yes, Orchard Track, and I think Warren Wheelhite, we were doing, I got it right here, Mr. ... It was early 1900s.
Yeah. But we're loaded with these things. It's crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. You'll hang tight. Real quick, anybody in the public want to speak in favor of this? All right. Anybody opposed? Mr. Attorney, I think we've done our work, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, good. Deal. Commissioners, we'll enter into Commissioner Deliberations.
I move approval, staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Stillwell, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly, it's good to see you. Those who don't know, Ms. Kelly's husband was the county commissioner here for many years, out in the floor home area. And we thank you for his service and for you being there with him during this. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you. All right. Okay, the next case is Code's Enforcement, Mr. Simmons, and that will be Mr. Hammond's pitch hitting for Mr. Simmons.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, sir.
Brian Hammond, Planning and Development Services Director. First, let me express my apologies. This is only here before you because staff made a mistake in terms of a letter we sent to the violator in this case, where we told them a different date than where we originally heard this. I think this was originally heard by the board on November 8th, and the board took action at that point. But again, we had told the applicant a different date, and that's why they were, excuse me, the violator, a different date, and that's why we had to kind of retract that and backtrack to this point. Essentially, this is a Code's case over a fence issue. Staff has determined that it is in compliance. It is before you today to deal with the, a lien which we do have on the property. And a fine reduction cannot be, come before you until we have determined it to be in compliance. So that's the reason it's here. Anytime they come before you, we have already determined it to be compliant. Second thing, Code's continues to try to be fair. We do not hold grudges. We do not get involved in either side when there are neighborhood wars. This certainly has been a contentious issue going back, probably, best I can tell by my records, at least 2008, but has been a problem for a good four years now in its current form. This is not the only case I have on this particular piece of property. We do have another, a second case that's ongoing that will be coming, well, it's going through the process at this time. It has not been concluded because it involves a permit that is still active. It is not uncommon for us to have more than one case on a piece of property. If violations come in at different times, they are treated as separate entities. So again, what, the current fine, or the current lien we have, is $3,400 on this property at this time. And staff had originally recommended that we reduce this down to 477, if paid within 30 days of the BOCC action. That is strictly a recommendation based on a rough estimate of what costs we have in it. As you'll notice, we did give you a cost sheet that explains that. Our cost sheets are, let's just say, as with most of our enforcement activities, relatively lenient. Again, we are not out for anything other than compliance. We are not after people's money here. So the violator, Mr. Sullivan, is here and would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Any questions for Mr. Hammond before he leaves?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lible.
At our last meeting, quite different commission, we had recommended half of the 3,400. Where will we stand with that now? Null and void?
It's null and void. Again, you took, the previous board took the action on November 8th. They rescinded the action in the consent agenda on November 22nd, I believe it was.
Okay.
And so we're back to square one. We're first time to the board.
Make sure that was off the board.
But you're, excuse me, Mr. Leary.
Yeah, you're fine. I'm finished.
Your recommendation is a $1,700 fine. I'm seeing this on the bottom of the recommendation page, if paid by February.
And again, this was prepared by John. But I do want to say that essentially, we're back to square one. We're back, I think, to our original recommendation, which is what we have in it, 470. Now, let me make this absolutely clear. When these things come to you at this point, these fine reductions, these are going to be cases where we have a lien. It is not our lien. It is your lien, okay? It is in favor of the Board of County Commissioners. What you do with it is strictly your purview. Staff could care less. Zero or the whole amount, we just don't care. What we're after is, A, we got compliance on the issue, and B, we want the case closed. Because we have, we open more cases every year than we close, and we have for at least a decade now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One more question for Mr. Hammond. So, not to question staff, but I'm questioning staff. You're at $477 with a Code case that ran from 2008 to present.
Yes.
Is that number correct?
Could we have padded that number more? Sure, we could have.
Not padded, it, actual cost.
And I will say, I did not compile it myself. But based on the numbers of hearings that we had, hearings and inspections that we've done, it is in the ballpark.
Seven years to get compliance is just unacceptable.
And as you know, we have a lot of cases that have drug on for years, sometimes.
I sure would like to tighten that up.
Particularly with foreclosures and bankruptcies.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to bring it up.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, and just point out on...
You may.
Commissioner Lible's question. It's my understanding that when, for all of these cases that come before you, where they request a reduction in the fine, when they provide a, an estimate of, of costs, which is typically what they're recommending the fine be reduced to, they, those are limited to certain hard costs that they're able to, to track, number of visits by inspectors and whatnot. It, it, it doesn't include a lot of the other ancillary costs which are out there, such as the time spent by the magistrate and, and things such as that. So, and it's not unusual for this case. That's how it's handled on all of them. But certainly, in the, in the universe of costs, there, there are more. But it's, it's difficult to quantify what all those are. And that's why you don't see all those additional, you know, more general costs included in that recommendation.
And let me reiterate again, we don't hold a grudge. A lot of these things go on for a long time, for various reasons. We try not to get on either side of an issue. And so often, it's a neighborhood dispute. And again, we can't afford to take sides. It's just, it's just not helpful for us to do that. So again, we are, try to be lenient. We try to be equally just or equally unjust to both parties, as the case may be. But in all cases, we try to treat them the same.
Mr. Hammond, I also have a concern, and I echo Commissioner Lible's concern. And, Mr. Manning, I appreciate your comments. But there should be a way for us to capture some of those costs associated with the magistrate, the attorneys, the other stuff that goes along. And maybe there should be a flat fee or some sort. But I tend to agree that there should be some way to capture that. That's what we should be doing in government, and that would alleviate some of the costs...
If I could?
That are dealt with with the county. Yes, Commissioner Lible?
I think a proposed fee upfront that represents the longer the constituents or the warring parties, if you want to call them that, stretch it out by not coming up with resolve, the more it costs. That simple.
Just be careful, you are putting the burden on only one side.
No, both sides.
Because it's the, it's only costing the person with the lien.
Oh, the violator. True. Okay, fine. So it be.
Please understand, again, the lien balance that we're dealing with here is $3,400.
I mean, yeah.
It's your lien. You can charge him $3,400 if you want to.
Right.
Strictly within your purview.
Well, I'd like to hear from Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond, for that.
Mr. Hammond, real quick, though, but if this is reduced to where I'm seeing 477, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That stops it. That stops the bleeding, I mean, what the county's spending as we're spending now on this situation.
Yes. I mean, essentially, whatever you approve, then, if they, as long as they pay it within the timeframe, then we will do the paperwork, send to the county attorney's office for a release of that lien, and we're done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, would you please come forward, state your name and address? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Preston Sullivan, 194 Joann Street, Hawthorne, Florida. Let me make sure we understand what we're talking about here. That 2008 date that he's referring to is a date that was when we applied for a building permit for additions to our home on Joann Street. It was applied for and approved by Putnam County. It has been an ongoing issue with a couple of inspections that we had our architect make and submit to the building department, which they declined to accept, and then requested us to have an engineer by the state of Florida come out and make the inspections as a third-party inspector, and write a letter to Putnam County stating that the work that actually hadn't been done is in compliance with Code and per plans. I did that. The engineer did write the letter. He made the inspections. It was submitted to Putnam County for approval. My understanding, it was approved and accepted. The part that we're talking about here is for a fence, a non-permitted fence, no permit required to install a fence. I installed a fence between my neighbor and myself. The neighbor complained because he said the fence was too high. Granted, I did make the fence too high. I've already admitted to that. We've since made remedies to that. The fence has been inspected by Putnam County Code Enforcement on three different times, and approved on three different times, complying with the ordinances that Putnam County gave us. The last issue that came up, Mr. Simmons came out and implied that the fence was within 25 feet of what the Code says as a body of water, which he interprets as the mean-high water line, which are actually two different points. When I erected the fence, I was 37 feet from the body of water, complying with what the Code says of 25 feet from a body of water. He reopened the case. I did remove the fence down to the 25 feet. They required us to have a civil engineer do a civil site plan, showing the amount of work we had done there. We went before the magistrate. The magistrate gave us a hearing date to comply with. We complied. We had the drawing, the engineer do the work. We complied. We called Putnam County Code Enforcement for an inspection two weeks prior to the compliant date. We called at least three to seven times. No one ever returned a phone call. I had been dealing with Mr. Harris in planning and zoning at the building department. I emailed him, asking, "How do I get my inspections if no one from Code Enforcement would call me back?" He indicated to me that Code Enforcement was undermanned by only one person, Lisa Suarez. She was double-dutyed, doing dog catcher control as well. Mr. Harris emailed me back stating that they would do a final inspection on the fence at the time we do our final inspection on our building permit. He later rescinded that, saying that, no, he was overruled by his administrator, saying they could not combine the two inspections. At that point, this is where we're at. We received a letter from Putnam County indicating we owed the 30, $3,000-some. I wrote a letter back to John at his request, asking for the debt reduction, stating these facts to him, went over it in his office with him several times. This is the recommendation that Putnam County staff made. This is the recommendation that Putnam County staff made, down to four hundred seventy-seven dollars. I don't necessarily agree with it, because I don't feel I was treated fairly on the inspection dates, because no one ever showed up. But I am willing to pay the four hundred seventy-seven to resolve this case, and, as he says, close it and get it off the books. That's basically my side of the story, I, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you. If we could get a rebuttal from Mr. Hammond.
Certainly.
On these timelines that he's disputing, please.
As I said, this has gone on for a long time, but this particular issue, I know, was first brought to me, I think, that was before the Inspector Kathy left, and that's easily been four years ago. At that time, we had granted a, a fence waiver to him, so that he could actually put up the second fence. And there are two fences there. There's a chain-link fence, and then there's a stockade fence. We did allow him to do that. Each time we had, I had different persons inspecting the property. Each time they would inspect it, they would come back to me and tell me, well, it measured X, Y, and Z. But I'd have to remind them that the code says specifically, six feet. So, if it was over six feet, then it did not, it was not a case, a case we could cure at this point. It had to be cut down to six feet. Well, that's why I took three inspections. But we have, at this point, determined to be in compliance. Done what we asked him to do.
The direction the rough surface is facing?
That was the fence waiver I gave him about four years ago.
Okay. Okay, so in your opinion, that's in compliance?
Yes.
And then one other thing, Mr. Sullivan, if you would. The chain-link fence, the, your neighbors do not like the aesthetics of it. I've seen the photos are not so appealing. Would you be willing to remove that fence if this board were to comply? And what would be your reason? You're shaking your head.
Number one, when we came into the building department to request an actual fence permit, we were told we didn't need one. I, I brought a survey in with me of my property, showing that to the planners in the building department. Indicated, we did have a chain-link fence there. Indicated that we were in a dis, a, a land dispute with the neighboring owner, property owner. I asked, what would it take to get a administrative variance, or whatever vehicle it would take to turn the good fence to us, and the bad fence to the neighbor? Stating that the neighbor had told me not to be on his property, has posted no trespassing signs up there. It would be impossible to erect a stockade fence on his side of the property of the chain-link fence because of that. So, I was granted the administrative waiver to turn the good side of the fence to me, and install the fence.
I'm okay with that.
I understand, I'm just, I, I installed the fence on my side of the property, leaving the chain-link fence there. It, it was never a point brought to my attention, or no request at any point, to remove the fence. Now, it's my understanding, it is my fence, it stayed on my property. Does my neighbor have a right to tell me that the fence is ugly, that he don't like it? It's my fence. There's no code requirement saying that I can't put a fence there. There's no building permit requirement to erect a stockade fence. All it has to do is be in compliant with the code.
But the fact that you have a stockade fence. If you were to remove your chain-link fence, which is in disrepair, big time, would please your neighbors and calm the neighborhood, you find no value in that?
Wait, could you back up and make that statement again?
That it would calm the neighborhood?
No, 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 about the, the quality of the fence?
That it's in disrepair.
Who said that?
I've seen photos of it.
What's in disrepair?
Well, it's a matter of opinion. I'll agree with that.
No, no, you, you've stated it's in disrepair. It is a chain-link fence. What's in disrepair? It's not falling down, it's properly erected. What is in disrepair?
Okay, it's fine, thank you.
Okay, well, I, I just want to make sure, you're on the record to say it's in disrepair.
We're good, Mr. Sullivan. We're good. The fence is perfect.
I'm sorry, could you say?
Move on at this moment.
Okay, all right, very good. It's not a que, why is my neighbor feelings involved in this? It, it's my property.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm going to say this. I went out there to your property.
I'm sorry?
I went out there.
Okay.
I saw the fence go down to the lake. I've seen people that got, that have been slung through a fence on a lake before. It's not pretty.
My fence doesn't go with the water.
It was almost down there.
No, it's just not.
And the way it was constructed, it was strictly in spite, and we all know that. Now, you can admit it or not, but I've seen it, I've walked the property. That's your business and your neighbor's business. The fence is on your property. And I think, is there any other Commissioner comments at this point?
Well, I, I want to rebut what you said.
That's fine, rebut.
My fence does not, right now, as a matter of fact, the fence stops at, at least forty feet from the water line. As a matter of fact, I, I did a little research. South, or, or St. John's Water Management allows the property owner to extend a chain-link fence twenty-five feet into the water.
Well, that's, that's not a good idea.
I, I didn't say it was. I'm just saying that the research I found, they, they make that allowance. My fence is way further back from that. I park my boat there. I park my boat trailer there.
We're going to move forward, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for your comments, Commissioners. We're going to close this part, and we'll go into Commissioner deliberations.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the last meeting's deal at seventeen hundred dollars.
Commissioner Lible has made a motion to accept seventeen hundred dollars. Do I hear a second? Mr. Manning, can I ask a procedural question, please?
Sure.
Is it appropriate for the Chair to make a second?
The Chair can make a second.
I make the second? There is a proper motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The ayes have it, seventeen hundred dollars. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
May I ask a question?
No, sir, the case is closed. We will be moving on to appointments, and that's our next item. Mr. Sullivan, your case is closed.
I understand. When does a payment have to be made?
According to staff recommendation, you have until February thirteenth of two thousand seventeen. Is that correct, Mr. Hammond? Thank you. That's what staff recommendation.
February seventeenth?
February thirteenth of two thousand seventeen.
Thirty days from today.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing. Will I be notified by a letter of this?
You're notified now, sir. And I'm sure a letter will come, but you are notified now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, appointments?
Wait, bup, bup, bup. We have another piece of business. Mr. Leary, do you take this one?
No, not until after the appointments.
Okay.
Yeah, item thirteen.
Yeah, all right.
I'm keeping score, Mr. Lible.
Very happy about that one.
Chairman posed up, didn't he? Okay. I do have a few appointments, and I'll start with Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Mrs. Jamie Taylor has agreed to serve on that. Better Place Oversight Committee, I would like to appoint Diane Williams to that. I would like to draw your attention down to the bottom of the page where it says, Florida Association of Counties Representative Board of Directors. That committee does not exist, so we'll remove that committee. Also, on the waterways and trails, today, by acclamation, we'd like to establish that. We haven't really had that committee formally, but we will after today. And I would like to ask Mr. Chip Lible, our Commissioner, to serve on that.
Be honored to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving along, my recommendations, the MSBU Adjustment Committee. I would like to serve on that, if you don't mind. And Small County Coalition, I would like for Buddy Goddard and Mr. Bill Pickens to serve on that.
I accept. Slow down just a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Got it?
And the Solid Waste Adjustment Committee, I would like for Commissioner Stillwell to serve on that.
You guys need to, we're going to take these all in a motion, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. And so, you've got to nod either way at this moment, when he asks you.
Solid waste, correct?
Yes, sir. There was one that we found out today, Mr. Lible, that the Regional Transportation Committee was not listed on here, but you are on that committee. And I would like for you to continue to serve on that committee.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, is there, there is a couple of things else I want to talk about, but right now, I want to hear from you Commissioners, if you have any appointments that you would like to make. And if you don't, it's okay. I would encourage you to meet with your people and make sure they want to continue to serve, but nothing's, nothing's going to be.
Tourist Development Council, I spoke with you with a desire to, to continue chairing that, because I have a lot of ongoing business there through the trails programs and the bartram, both Blue Ways and rail trails promotions.
Okay. I'm in favor of that. Is that your only suggestion there, Mr. Lible, for these committees so far?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. Going to my left, Mr. Pickens, do you have any?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm with Zoning Board of Adjustments for District One. Recommend Earl Bellengy.
Okay.
Continue on that board.
Okay. Mr. Stillwell, do you have any appointments you'd like to make?
Yes, I had on District Three on Planning Commission, Mr. Half, Jerry Hafner, spoke with him, and he would like to continue. On the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and by District Three, Ms. Fay Davis, I spoke with her, and she will be like to continue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Goddard, do you have any appointments you'd like to make today?
I have not spoke to either one of them.
All right. And Mr. Lible, you've already done it. So, the board, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the people mentioned in the previous comments.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Proper motion, proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Item of business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Tim Smith over here. Hey, did you mention the Development Authority?
We did, the Tourist Development Authority?
No, 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 no.
Under, it says, committees with commissioners serving, the first one, Development Authority.
Okay, we're.
Bottom of page, the third page of the packet.
You have the FAC representative, and then right above that is the Development Authority.
Oh, I see that, yes.
And the reason I ask that is I serve as the Chair of the Development Authority, and we have business that we need to be moving on, and we, these members, two of those.
I'd be willing to serve, again.
Mr. Clark, thank you for, I, I did, I would like to serve on that, too, and we will need, so we have myself, Mr. Lible. Is there any other people that would like to serve on that?
Isn't that the one I spoke to you about?
I don't know. Is that the one?
I'll nominate Bill Pickens, right here now.
Isn't that the one, yeah?
The title of that is.
Yes, that is, Mr. Pickens, that's the one. Like it or not.
It is now, isn't it?
It is now. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for that. So.
Thank you.
So, would we like to amend our motion to include Larry Harvey, Chip Lible, and Bill Pickens Commissioners to serve with, on the Development Authority?
Mr. Pickens made the original motion.
Pickens, would you amend your motion to accept that?
I'll amend that to accept that.
Okay, Mr. Goddard, would you?
And I, yes, yes, sir.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, the ayes have it, and.
Just, Mr. Chairman, could I get clarification on the?
Clarification. Is that what you really want?
Yes, it is. You had mentioned on the, what was it, Waterways and Trails? That that was a, is that, is that an old committee that's being revived?
That was an old committee that really was never set up in the county, and today, we set it up, and we've appointed Mr. Chip Lible to it. We will be making appointments to that. We all have appointments to make in the future.
It's a newly constituted committee.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's been functioning, but never been created formally, that's what they're doing.
We're creating it formally today.
Okay, well, my, my only question is, what, for the record, I think we, we need to have direction on what the function of that committee is.
I've spoke to Mr. Leary.
It's had a purpose, so they'll continue the same purpose that they've had in the past. I mean, it, it's had a purpose, they're just constituting it formally.
We've got staff guessing over there.
Mr. Leary, if you'll bring back the purpose of it next to me, then we'll apply, we'll assign people to that as we go. Okay, the next, thank you, Mr. Manning, for that. The next order of business is item number thirteen, County Administrator Rick Leary. Item A, Land Donation Agreement and for Acceptance of Property for the new Animal Control Facility. And thank you all for being patient, waiting for this item to come up. We appreciate it. Mr. Leary, you have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have received an offer of donation of property from an individual, Mr. Carl Beck. Property constitutes about sixty-five acres of land. It is land fronting Highway nineteen. It is located beside the existing school bus garage. A small portion of that land which fronts Highway nineteen and extends back. A great deal of that land is really technically wetlands, although there is enough of it at the front of the land that would, it would serve as a situs for the animal control facility. Mr. Manning has been in negotiation with the donating parties. Council deed has been prepared, an agreement has been prepared, which parties have agreed to the provisions of, that would provide for the donation of that property for the use as so stated. And that is before you for acceptance. You know, there is some funding provided for in the Better Place Plan budget for construction of an animal control facility. We have an application pending with USDA Rural Development for some, some level of grant funding, and you have already had a meeting with your lobbyist, requesting that they work with your legislative delegation to try to secure additional funding from the state in this upcoming session of the legislature to hopefully finalize the funding necessary to allow you to move forward with constructing a new animal facility on that, on that site. So, all of that seems to be coming together, and if it finally comes together, the county will be able to move forward with, with bringing that new shelter to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Mr. Manning, you had a comment?
Yeah, there's one, there's one change in the agreement, which is merely we're replacing. It has, under Exhibit A, it lists tax ID numbers. It's more appropriate that we have the legal descriptions in there. So, before it's signed, what you'll be approving is that agreement with the legal descriptions attached as Exhibit A, and those being a match of what's shown in the deed. It's just a technicality.
Thank you. This is a wonderful step forward for animal control. And for those of you who haven't had a chance to go out to our current facility, you will see how badly needed this is for Putnam County. Commissioners, any comments, please?
Yes, a big one. I move that we accept the offer and donation of property.
We have a proper motion from Commissioner Lible. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Stillwell seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Now, we can give the kudos.
Okay, good. The motion carries, thank you very much.
We can say thank.
Yes. Woo-hoo!
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah, thank you. Merry Christmas.
I'd like to speak, I would like to speak to that. We've got a couple of things. Carl Sebeck Jr. is very active. He helped develop SAFE, which is Saving Animals from Euthanasia. Done a great job in both Putnam and St. John's Counties. He wanted to see our animal services at another level. He's very passionate about this, and from the bottom of my heart, working all these years, and from everybody involved, especially staff, Lisa, all of them, we thank Mr. Beck very much. And then, to elaborate further, Sheriff Alek Deloche also is, well, I've had conversation with him, and in the future, with the close proximity of both the jail and the proposed Animal Services Center, we'd like to get like a vet tech program for some of the prisoners to turn their lives around, and also bring extra labor into animal services to relieve, these girls are doing incredibly hard labor. We need some strong backs over there, and some, some bright minds that want to turn their, their lives around. But I look forward to a relationship with the SO and Animal Services. This is a great day in Putnam County for animals.
Thank you, Mr. Lible. I would like to say, too, is, yes, thank you. I would like to say too, is, yes, thank you. If the public feel so inclined, uh, they are in need of, always in need of feed for these animals. Um, so if you feel inclined to make a Christmas donation, an amount of feed, or monetarily, they'll be glad to accept that.
They're, they're very crowded right now. We have a mega of adoption, mega adoption this weekend, and, um, supplies are needed.
Okay. Mr. Leary, you have item B also, if you'll explain, I'm sorry?
I think, Ms. Roxanne wanted to say something.
Yes, I did fill out the cards, but it's in the item.
I'm sorry, Ms. Roxanne Weeks, and you're exactly correct, and I did, I do apologize for that. I should've called upon you earlier.
That's okay.
We were caught up.
I'm happy as a clam this land is being donated, and that we are moving forward with an animal control facility. Um, I read the documents, um, you know, there's a twofold thing here, I don't know that everybody is aware of. The land is next in front of the Sheriff's Department and goes left, as you're looking at the Sheriff's Department, goes left from the bus garage. There's, there's a strip down the side of the Sheriff's Department, and then it opens up in the back behind the jail. Uh, it is actually three parcels, uh, in combination to, to make the sixty-five. The county already owns the land on the right half, now they will own the land on the left half, and they can later in the future build their new courthouse complex, you know, that there's talk of.
I don't think we'd build it there, but that's.
Um, the one thing I'd like you to keep, just to put a bug in your ear, um, is the property, you know, there's gonna be involved wetland mitigation credits to be purchased, and lots of filling and all of this, but, um, Mr. Beck was specific that the animals be displayed up front on Highway nineteen. Uh, I would, you know, other than that, it says the land may be used for any lawful purpose the county determines. I would like to have you keep in mind, that that long strip by the Sheriff's Department would be perfect. Um, like I said, the front is the approximately five acres, and then use that long strip in the back, 'cause you really need about ten acres. You have to take into account all the farm animals that come, we have a lot of horses, goats, pigs, I mean, it's amazing, the animals that they have come through there, and that long strip would be, um, an excellent solution for stables and things like that, um, possibly a, uh, meet and greet type area. And when this all starts occurring, we'd like to, uh, have a workshop with the county, 'cause you, you know, uh, for years, I've been very involved in this animal issue, and we would like to consider establishing a nonprofit to subcontract from the county to run the facility. It is too much for planning and zoning, um, there was no success with the Sheriff's Department, although we would certainly love the inmate trustees coming to work, the location, everything like that. It'll make it an ideal location. Flagler Humane Society does that. They're a beautiful model, it's a no-kill shelter, um, just, just keep in mind, somewhere down the road, we would like a nonprofit to subcontract for the county for that, because we would hire, it wouldn't just be county employees, it's somebody that had, uh, you know, just gone to the officer school that the state officers, it's a forty-hour course. We would have people that have been involved for rescues, it, for years, no proper shelter management. We have people from all areas of Jacksonville, St. Augustine, and Gainesville that will get involved, and, um, we wanna make this a, a success, because it is, the animal issues in Putnam have, have been bad for a while, and this is our chance to come out the gate and turn this around, get a no-kill shelter. And, you know, my big thing is, of course, you know, I love all the animals, but the other issue is also that this is a matter of public safety for the citizens, um, when you have unvaccinated animals, you know, for rabies, and dogs running loose, there's, so when we have a greater deal of kennels and, and more officers, we can get out there, it'll be great.
Ms. Weeks, thank you for your comments. We look forward to working with you, and we are happy that you're happy as a clam.
Oh, I am, I am. This is the greatest thing I've seen for the animals in probably six years, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Leary, item B, potential budget amendment for supervisor of elections.
All right, thank you, sir. I have been, just simply been asked to inform the board of the fact that, uh, there may be a need for a potential budget amendment, uh, before the end of the fiscal year, uh, for the supervisor of elections budget. As you are aware, the county, uh, well, actually, the, uh, canvassing board was served with a complaint regarding the, uh, recent election relative to the, uh, Office of Sheriff. Uh, the supervisor of elections has engaged council to represent the canvassing board, uh, so, uh, it remains to be seen as to what the magnitude of the legal fees might be relative to that matter. Uh, so depending on what the final cost might be, uh, it may be that the fees may be able to be absorbed within the existing appropriations for the supervisor of elections, uh, but if not, uh, it might be necessary to amend that budget prior to the end of the fiscal year, so I'm merely alerting to the board, uh, to that possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Leary, and we'll know those prices closer as we go into the next, next calendar year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
The clerk's office was, uh, had a suit brought against it one time for some, uh, procedural, um, items in the, in the court process that we do, and the officers and Board of Directors' insurance, uh, actually represented us and covered that call, so I'm assuming that y'all are looking at that, uh, possibility to inquire on our, uh, insurance coverage, that they may offer some assistance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to, um, Barbara, and, and she's looking at that as a possibility. So we'll, we'll see whether or not there might be some reimbursement coming from that perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. One thing we got, let me, County Attorney Stacy Manning, you have any comments?
Uh, I, I do have one item.
Please do.
Um, it's, um, you probably got something from me yesterday. Um, this is basically, um, we're cleaning up a eminent domain matter that, um, was authorized by resolution, um, gosh, over a year ago now, um, for, uh, a, pour some land for White Oak Trail, um, to do some improvements, some roadway improvements. We've finally, uh, reached an agreement with that party, and, um, I provided you kind of a breakdown of what that settlement is. We also discussed it at the, um, at the workshop, um, and so I'm just looking for authorization for, uh, majority of the board to go ahead and authorize the chair to, um, sign that settlement in accordance with those terms that I presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Move approval, council's recommendations.
We have a proper motion on the floor from Commissioner Leibel, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pickens, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Thank you.
Your request is granted. Okay, um, Clerk of the Court, Mr. Tim Smith, thank you for being so patient today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations, uh, to everyone on a great meeting today. It really is a, a different attitude, and I hope that that's one that we can continue to build on over the next few years, as we work with our citizens. I have no formal items, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and also to let Ms. Weeks know that we're not in the market for a new courthouse. So, don't, I don't want that rumor to get somewhere. We just had a complete renovation of our courthouse, and we would like to certainly invite our new commissioners to come down, look at that. Um, it is a great building, uh, actually, uh, just the other day, turned a hundred and six years old, and, uh, it is up to, up to date with technology, uh, it is efficient, and, uh, people come in that building now and they say, y'all did a great job of, uh, renovating this building and keeping it nice, and it really is an anchor downtown, and so we think that's where we should be.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, thank you. Starting to my right, Commissioner Leibel, commission or comments?
Um, just like to, well, Merry Christmas, and I mean Merry Christmas, especially to the animals in this county. Um, but seeing the constitutional officers, particularly Sheriff-elect, Mr. Overturf, just having them in the room is nice. I hope we can continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goddard?
I'd like to say Merry Christmas also, and, and it's been quite a pleasure.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, also Merry Christmas, and, and thank all the people for attending, and, like you said, the constitutional officers. And, and it is a great day for animal control, as I, uh, get my feet wet as a new commissioner and learn more about animal control. I, I know that a new facility is definitely, is needed, and a, a new location also, so we have the location, and looking forward to moving that forward, so, and enjoyed my second, uh, meeting.
Commissioner Stillwell?
Yes, the same, Merry Christmas, and, uh, I think it's, it is a great day for Putnam County with the animal control, and it being visible, uh, and thank you, Mr. Beck, uh, if that's in line, and, uh, so from then on, and I appreciate everybody, it's, uh, the parades, we've all rode together, it's been nice. That's the only thing Sunshine Law let us do, is ride the parade together, so we, but we've done that, so I'll, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I'd like to say a big thank you to my board for allowing me to be the Chair this year. Um, I didn't screw up, I don't think, too bad today, I think we did okay. Uh, we'll do better as we continue along the path. It's refreshing to go to sleep last night excited to come into this meeting today. I was looking so forward to it, uh, made ourselves available yesterday for anybody that needed it, and, um, it's just a really, a new day in Putnam County. And two thousand seventeen is gonna be great for Putnam County. A lot of things are happening, and, um, but this commission's going to be on top of those things, waiting for the best results for the citizens of Putnam County. I do have a card here in my hand, is Ms. Nora Blunt still in the room?
She had to leave.
She had to leave?